All right. Item one, approval of August 5, 2015 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two, August Platts. Item three, 2541, 2015 is a rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts to the C4 Commercial Regional District for Allowed Forms located at the northwest corner of West 41st Street and South Duluth Avenue. Item four, number 3236, 2015, rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the O Office District for Allowed Forms located at 4605 South Louise Avenue. Item five, 3271, 2015, rezone from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District for Allowed Forms located southwest of Great Bear Recreation Area. Item six, 3285, 2015, rezone from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for Allowed Forms located at 4800 South Louise Avenue. Item seven, 3223, 2015, preliminary subdivision plan for Copper Creek Estates Edition located at the southwest corner of East 26th Street and South Six Mile Road. And that is the end of the consent agenda.
Are there any objections from the audience on items one through seven? Any objections from the commissioners?
We do have a request from a couple of audience members out in the overflow room to pull item number three from the consent to the regular agenda, please.
Thank you. We'll put item number three on the consent agenda. On the regular agenda. I need a motion for the consent agenda, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Your chair will make an amendment to the consent agenda to move item three to the regular agenda.
I'll second. I need a mo— we've got a motion to move item number three to the regular agenda. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Same sign. With that, all in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes and amendment passes.
Okay.
Now we'll move on to the regular agenda. I need a motion to approve the regular agenda. Second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying— gotta have the amendment first. No, okay. All in favor of the regular agenda signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Same sign? Nope. Regular agenda passes. Planning staff, could you come up for item number three, please?
I can go ahead and read item number three for the record. That would be, item three is 2541, 2015, rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts to the C4 Commercial Regional District for Allowed Forms located at the northwest corner of West 41st Street and South Duluth Avenue.
Jason Bieber representing planning staff. This is an application to buy Billion Family Limited Partnership. They are proposing to rezone several parcels at—between 41st and 39th Street and between Norton and the recently vacated South Duluth Avenue. They are proposing to rezone to construct— to construct—expand the existing Billion dealership, their sales display, and employee parking areas. As the submitted site plan does indicate, the required 25-foot setbacks off West 39th Street and South Norton Avenue. This is more than what is required in the RE5 form at 15. The plan also is showing roughly 422 new parking spaces, and they are proposing that 113 of these parking spaces be dedicated to staff—Billion staff parking. They are showing 61 on the north portion of the proposed parking lot, and then an additional 52 behind the existing Billion Kia lot up in the northeast corner of this plan. And that gets us a total of 113 parking space. And staff does feel that these should be permanently marked and dedicated for employee parking only. Their buffer yard plan, they are showing a 25-foot setback buffer yard, which they are required 22 and 1/2 feet. They are showing a 6-foot berm and 50 units of landscaping per 100 lineal feet. Although this submitted landscape plan does—appears to meet the landscape units and the requirements as stated in the compatibility chart, staff does feel that—the project of this magnitude within an existing residential neighborhood warrants significant buffer yard screening and landscape plans. Therefore, staff does feel an alternative site plan should be approved by the planning commission once after the rezoning is approved. The subject property is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The subject Billion Lewis Development is located at the corner of two type-one major arterial streets, South Minnesota Avenue and West 41st Street. With the vacation of South Duluth Avenue, traffic will now be routed down Norton Avenue to the first lighted intersection, and that is pretty consistent with a subregional employment center, which is usually on two type-one arterial streets. If this rezoning request is approved, the applicant can construct the proposed Billion dealership display and employee parking lot once an alternative site plan is approved by the planning commission. If this rezoning request is denied, these properties will continue to be zoned RD1, and they most likely will continue to be rentals since Billion owns most of them. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shapes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan and potential incompatibilities can be minimized with required buffer yard, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning with the following conditions. One, an alternative site plan, including detailed buffer yard plans, be approved by the planning commission, and that would be at a subsequent meeting. And two, the proposed 113 employee parking spaces, 61 in the new lot and 52 behind the Billion Kia, will be permanently marked and reserved for Billion employee parking only. And we also would like to add one more condition that we would like to add to the staff report, so that would be condition number three. And those—in that condition would be, uses will be limited to outdoor motor vehicle sales and display and associated employee parking areas to prevent any buildings from being constructed on this next— or this rezoning area. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair. Jason, might not be a fair question for you, but the vacation of the street was approved two weeks ago from last— from last night, I believe. You weren't at that meeting, or was any of your staff at that meeting?
I think Mr. Cooper was at the meeting.
Pardon?
I think Mike Cooper was at the meeting.
Okay. I'm not sure how much discussion there was. Was there neighborhood input at that time as far as vacating that street?
There were some neighbors that spoke on it. Some for, or some mostly against. A lot of their comments—that's what we try to incorporate into the staff report with the conditions. A lot of them wanted to see a different kind of buffer yard. They were worried about Billion employees parking on the street, and then they were also worried about them constructing in addition to the existing building and creating, instead of a parking lot, a large building there. And that's what we kind of took into consideration when we recommended the conditions that we have listed here.
Do you know, was this plan presented to the council?
This was the plan—this was the plan that the engineering department showed at the specific meeting, and then they also showed this, which is what they are going to do. The engineering department's gonna sign that whole area for no parking, or two-hour parking. So—in a four-way stop then at Norton and 39th Street. So this was all presented at the vacation meeting, so.
Jason, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a couple. Jason and Diane, can you point out the exits on the map?
The access point?
The access points, yes.
Yep. The access point onto Norton Avenue was originally farther north. That has been shifted all the way down to the southwest corner, just north of the existing dentist office property, and that was mostly at the request of the neighbors. They wanted that as far away as possible. And then they'll have an access onto the—to West 39th Street. That will go on kind of east of the parking lot, so it won't be a direct access to North Duluth Avenue. You kind of have to jog—jog to the left to get on there, so.
And then one additional question. It looks like the parcel that the dentist office is excluded from this— or it's not a part of this project has—so this—the owner of this project is okay with this project, and it won't impact his parking situation?
Yeah, I believe he's in support, and the applicant may be able to talk more on that. What I've—believe I've heard is he's just still wants to do his dentist office, not ready to retire, and so he's in support of the project, but I know they've had more talks with him than I have. So, we haven't heard from him against it, I guess, is what I'm saying, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? With that, is the petitioner here? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Jim Heiney from 4608 South Tamar, and I represent Billion Family Limited Partnership. Like I said, there's extensive discussion at the city council for the vacation of the street. There's really been no changes to that, except for the condition that we do not build a building on it, and we're okay with that. We want it as a parking lot. It's—the dentist you referred to, he is here. I'm sure he would talk on it. He is okay. We've worked with him extensively, so if you want to, he can come up after and tell you that he's okay with it from that standpoint. We hired Sayer and Associates to do it. Meets all the requirements for the various things that were concerns at the neighborhood meeting. We had two neighborhood meetings, and we did have people, like Jason said, for and against it, and I think all the concerns have been met. So—but, you know, I'm sure there'll be some people made to disagree with me, but—any questions for me?
Mr. Chair. Jimmy, you've heard the three conditions that Jason listed, and you guys are comfortable with those?
Yes. Mr. Billion's here, and he approved them, so we have—the guy here that said yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Do you want to talk to Dr. Severson, or do you care to hear his side, or not?
We'll—we'll call him.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
I live up to the second house from the corner.
Sir, could we have your name and address, please?
Pardon?
Could we have your name and address, please?
Oh, Glenn Hanson, 3013 South Duluth, Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
The flooding is what my concern is. Now, all the water that comes down through there comes through a 72-inch drain tile, and it comes from the north and from the west. The drain tile going down Duluth Avenue to 41st Street is a 72-inch. That 72-inch drain tile drains into a 64-inch. Now, the 64-inch is actually 12 inches higher than the 72, and anybody that knows anything about engineering—you don't have to be smart to figure out the backflow that you're gonna get. So I talked to the engineers, and they said they were gonna drain the water instead of going into that catch basin up there. They were gonna drain it south. But the same water is gonna go in through the same little 64-inch hole. Now, I know people are getting a little concerned over the flooding down there. About three years ago, that park flooded so bad, I thought Billion's garage was gonna get flooded, and there was only about a 2 and 1/2 inch rain. We had a pretty good rain last week, or whatever. Water was coming out of this storm sewer, not into it. Now, you—do you understand what I'm trying to say? You gotta have a plan before you do this—this thing, because it's gonna be covering up roughly a block and a half of—well, he's gonna seal a land, and that water's gotta go somewhere. As it is now, the water seeps through the ground. There's about 12 inches alone, and then the bottom of it's all sand. The water table is somewheres around 10, 11 feet below the surfaces of the ground now. And with that, I'm gonna run away and hide in the weeds, see? Because I'm not any good at this type of thing at all. It is no fun to come up here and talk to you people like this, because I'm lousy at it. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Sir? Just a minute. Commissioners, do you have any questions of—
Glenn, I wished all of us could speak as well as you do. Thank you for coming up and sharing that with us.
Well, I've lived down there since Duluth Avenue was a gravel road when we built our house. So I've seen a lot of changes, and I really don't think Billion has got much time, because he's got headaches that I cannot dream of. Okay.
Thank you, Glenn.
Can I go run?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience?
Paul Korn with Sayer Associates. I'm the engineer working with Billion on the project. And I would just like to respond to the drainage concerns. I have met with—with Glenn Hanson, I believe. Is that correct? Yes. And tried to—tried to address his concerns, but basically, we do show a detention pond on the north side of the property. Our direction from the city has been that we cannot release drainage from the project at a greater rate than what it currently is now. So, we will provide detention within the Billion property to discharge the storm water at a rate as it currently does from the site. So, the goal of this project is not to increase or make worse the drainage situations that already exist down there, so.
Any questions from the commissioner?
Mr. Chair. Paul, are you politely saying that if there's a drainage issue there, it has nothing to do with this site?
Correct. Yeah, there is drainage.
And that's what you guys are proposing the site should not—is being designed not to make the problem worse.
Correct. Yes. And by that, we are—that's the purpose of that detention pond, is to size that at a sufficient capacity, so we're able to detain that water on-site and release it at a rate equivalent to what it currently is now with the—with the houses that are out there.
Thank you, Paul.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Or the doctor? Was it a doctor or dentist?
If hearing none, I'm gonna look for commission action on item number three.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, I think the comments in the—in the application here related to the drainage, in addition to the engineer's comments, makes sense that they can't exacerbate an existing drainage situation. In fact, a lot of times, things can improve with these kind of improvements, with this kind of infrastructure that's required, so.
Mr. Chair. Yes. I'd also say the three stipulations that were listed, I think, probably alleviate a lot of the neighborhood concerns. And I think that's been extensively discussed with the neighbors, and hopefully it helps make it a little more palatable to them.
I also like the fact that this design of—obviously, it has to follow Shapes Sioux Falls, but because it does, on the west and the north, there's a buffer yard against the residential areas. That's something that in the past, we would have asked for after the fact, rather than it being anticipated, and so it's showing that our buffer yard requirements within Shapes Sioux Falls make a lot of sense and help to prevent, you know, that—that sharp transition, and it helps to pattern and buffer things a little bit better.
And, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to see that the access point on Norton is moved to the south versus being in the middle of the block as it was originally planned. I think that's gonna be a lot better for aesthetics and neighborhood traffic, et cetera, so.
Any other discussion? With that, I need a—we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by—
Mr. Chair, was that motion made with two or three stipulations?
Three. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion for item number three with the three stipulations. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. I forgot to announce that if you're here for items one through seven, you are free to go. Laurie, could you read item number eight, please?
Number eight, 3238, 2015, rezone from the CN Conservation District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District for Allowed Forms located at the southwest corner of West 12th Street and South Discovery Avenue.
Good evening. Diane DeCoyer with Planning Office. The applicant for this is Nick Van Overschild. The owner is Steve Malagard with Malagard, Inc. The purpose of this is to rezone for five buildings containing three to nine units per structure for a total of 33 units. Each of the structures are slab-on-grade one-story. The location is southwest corner of 12th and Discovery. It is just over three acres. Part of this area is in the floodway, the—let's see, the—the corner up—right up against 12th and Discovery, and that will be parceled off and left as conservation. The rest of it, like I said, would be zoned as low-density apartments, the RA1. The zoning on this would require a buffer yard to the south, and the proposal is to have a fence to the north of the property, just to be able to maintain anyone from entering the traffic onto 12th Street, just as a safety precaution. The proposed zoning meets the Shapes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. The parcel is located next to the 12th Street, where a low-density apartment building will provide a buffer between the arterial street traffic impacts and the single-family homes to the south. If the rezoning of this property is approved, the applicant can develop this lot for RA1 Apartment Residential for no more than two stories in height and limited to 24 units per building. If the rezoning is denied—excuse me, denied, the parcel will continue to be zoned as CN Conservation. Open space, which allows for tree farms, golf courses, cemeteries, nature preserves, drainage facilities, community gardens. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shapes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff recommends approval for this rezoning. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting last week. I think it was very well-attended, and I think a lot of those neighbors are here in the audience tonight to speak on the subject. But I can answer any questions you might have at this time.
Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair, I just have one question. So, in the report, Diane, it has the intersection may be signalized in the future when warrants are needed. Are you talking about the 12th Street?
Correct.
Okay.
12th and Discovery. Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Luke Fortney. I live at 500 South Beretta Lane. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today, and for the sake of time and clarity, with your permission, I'd like to address you on behalf of approximately 116 citizens in the Rocky Ridge area, representing approximately 89 homes. Would that be okay?
Yes.
At this time, I would like those in the audience who have allowed me to represent them to stand, so the commission knows who I am representing. Thank you. Several years ago, the developer for Rocky Ridge, in conjunction with the city of Sioux Falls, rezoned this property from agriculture to conservation, which allows for open space, natural areas, and passive parks, such as golf courses and bike trails. This classification obviously inflated nearby property values. Everyone in the development bought their lot with the impression that this land would stay conservation. Recently, many of the last available lots have been sold, leaving only four available lots in the whole development. The developer waited until almost all of the lots were sold before he attempted to rezone it for apartments. This neighborhood feels deceived and tricked by these actions, and we are asking for the city to protect our neighborhood from the negative impacts of this rezoning change. It says—in the staff report for this zone change, that if this rezoning is approved, the applicant can develop this lot for RA1 apartments, which includes up to 24 units per building and up to two stories high. The Shape Places Plan would classify this as high-density residential, which clearly creates compatibility issues with the abundance of suburban, single-family land around it. Even if you were to include the developer's proposed design as a condition of this rezone, you still wouldn't be able to classify it as medium density, because medium density is described as no more than eight units per building. This land is being proposed to be rezoned to high density, no matter how you look at it. This property is adjacent to houses that range from $300,000 to $500,000, and there are even houses right up the street that are around $1 million. The covenants for the land that is immediately adjacent to this property were written several years ago, before any of these lots were purchased. By forcing the homeowners to abide by these covenants, a standard for the neighborhood was set. I personally live right across the street from this property, and my covenants clearly state that I must have a minimum of 1,600 square feet on the main level, a minimum three-car garage, no vinyl siding, no window air conditioners, and no wall heating units. Fences can only be 42 inches high, max. To my knowledge, the proposed apartment complex would be in violation of every one of these rules. Furthermore, the covenants clearly state the following, and I quote, "No lot shall be used for any purpose except for single-family residential dwelling," end quote. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, the time restraints of this hearing don't allow me to read all the stipulations of these covenants, but let me assure you— allow me to read all the stipulations of these covenants, but let me assure you, there are many other stipulations in the covenants that are just as strict. Please understand that these covenants set a precedent and a standard that shaped our entire neighborhood. The purpose of the shaped places plan is to create proper transitions and develop lands that is compatible and comparable to the land uses around it. In closing, I would like to mention that we were told the developer would likely hold a neighborhood meeting, but when we called him to ask about the neighborhood meeting, our calls weren't returned. So we decided to hold our own neighborhood meeting. The developer did show up to that meeting because we had signs posted on the streets. At this meeting, there were people who were having trouble getting their questions out because they were almost in tears. People who worked their entire life so they could build a nice house and retire in a nice neighborhood and live there for the rest of their lives. For ninety-nine percent of these people, their home will be the largest purchase they will ever make in their lifetime. These people chose to invest in this neighborhood because of the standards and protections set forth by the covenants. I'm speaking on behalf of my neighborhood here. In my hand, I have a petition to deny this rezoning application. It contains one hundred and sixteen signatures representing over eighty-nine households in our neighborhood. We are begging you, we are pleading you, with you, do not allow this rezoning change. Please protect our neighborhood, and let's work together to find a more suitable land use for this property. On behalf of the Rocky Ridge neighborhood, I'd like to thank you for your time. We love this city, and we trust the planning commission to make the right decision.
Any questions from the commissioners for the-
I didn't catch your name.
My name is Luke Fortney.
Luke?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Luke from the commissioners? Thank you, Luke.
Yep. Would you like me to leave the petition here? Thank you.
And I gotta apologize a little bit. This is my first meeting that I've chaired, and I didn't request the petitioner to come up and, and state his stuff. So is the petitioner here? Thank you.
Uh, Nick Van Overshield, seventy-four, twenty-eight, South Home Place, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, uh, represent Van Overshield Custom Homes and Rocky Ridge Townhomes LLC. We had approached Steve Malagard, the developer, and he actually, he himself lives up on the hill in Rocky Ridge here back in, back in April, I believe it was. And kind of the first question out of his mouth was different than most of these land deals. You know, most people are like, write up your offer, what's your price, let's, let's go. His was, what are you gonna be building? And we're gonna have two or three meetings about what you're building before we even talk price. Cause he had been approached a couple times over the last few years, the way it sounded, for three-story, eighty-six unit buildings, some low-income type properties. I believe even in that, and he can speak too, I want him to, but I believe even some type of convenience store on this land. So when we proposed our slab-on-grade, low-rise, low-density, uh, what we believe low-impact project, um, he was pretty proud of it, actually, and, and, you know, thought it would fit in well with the community. Again, it's thirty-three units on three acres. Um, all the garages are attached. Again, the building's no taller than most of these people's houses that are three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand. But we believe it's a nice buffer between the single-family, the major arterial, 12th Street. Um, we've got a floodway to the east, and we've got light industrial zoning to the west. Um, a few of the comments at the neighborhood meeting, you know, if, if, if you don't care for our project, what would you like to see? A couple of comments where we'll just donate the land to the city and let them turn it into a city park. Um, another comment was, build townhomes that you can sell, not rentals. We don't want rentals. Maybe we'd be content with something you could sell. Well, the, the land is in the floodplain, so there can't be basements. Um, it has to be something slab-on-grade. And, and again, when you're right up against a floodway, especially after last Thursday night, when you're back in, when you're in a floodplain, when you're backing 12th Street, when you got light industrial to the west, um, not very marketable properties to try to, to try to sell as a condo or a townhome-type project. So, um, I guess, again, I'd like Steve to come up and, and share what he, again, he lives in there, he's a developer, and what he would like to, to say. But any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chair, just so I can be sure, you're not the landowner or the developer. You represent a company that wants to buy and build these units.
Correct.
And you obviously have an agreement subject to getting the zoning. Does your agreement say these are the units you plan on building there?
Uh, our, our purchase agreement with Steve does not say these are the units we plan on building there. Uh, yes, the, the purchase agreement is contingent upon the rezone, um, but we have every, I mean, this is exactly what we want to build on this land. We have no reason to deviate away from that. And I, and, you know, the one thing I think that started some of this animosity and stuff towards the project is, you know, the, the RA-1, you know, it's anything from five units up to twenty-four unit two-story. I mean, we're obviously on the low end of that. I, I think without that nine-unit building, if that was, single nine-unit building was an eight-unit building, we might even be in that, um, I believe it's RD-two, or even an, uh, uh, I forget what it is, MD-two or something. It's a townhome-type zoning with no larger than eight units per building. So, again, uh, without that nine-unit building, if that nine-unit is building was only an eight-unit and only had thirty-two units on here instead of thirty-three, all these rezone signs would've went out as townhomes, most likely, instead of the apartment rezone. So, I mean, it's, it's that close, it's that low-density.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other, anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this?
My name is Debbie Hayden Miller, and I live at six-twenty-five Beretta Lane. Um, there's a couple of things that I'd like to bring up. Already, when you're turning into that area from 12th Street, you put your blinker on a quarter of a mile ahead, and you're watching your, your rearview mirror, because people go very fast on 12th Street there, and you worry about being rear-ended. And, and in addition, people leaving in the mornings to go to work, there's, that's the only road into that area, into that whole neighborhood. So there's, it's, it's very congested, and putting more traffic into that area without addressing traffic concerns is, I think it's a safety issue. Somebody's gonna get killed at that, that intersection sooner or later without changes. Um, another thing that I, I find concerning is they talked about two parking spaces per unit. Um, but as you look at a lot of apartments, there's a lot of people who have guests and so forth, and they come out and they park out on the streets. Browning, which intersects with Discovery, tends to be very slippery during the winter. And so you always, right now, in the wintertime, you have a hard time stopping at that intersection because of ice. So with more traffic cars parked along the street, that's gonna cause some issues and probably some more traffic accidents. In addition, with the storm that we had last week, that area that they're talking about doing single slabs, part of it would have been flooded. If you go out and look at the area, you can see where the reeds, there, there is a, a water or a diversion ditch that goes right towards that area. Um, the water overflowed the ditch, went up over into that area, and even the, the zoning signs, the reeds are up to the bottom of the signs. So most likely, any of those slabs would be flooded. So I guess I would like to know, for people who are gonna be moving into those apartments, are they gonna be told, you know, what their chance of being flooded out is? Because it, there's a good chance that it could happen. Um, if you go back to that last picture, um, right, if you go where that nine-unit building is, there is a slab house right next to it. That slab house with the storm was completely covered with water with the storm. So that is a house that's being built there that is already a slab, and it was completely covered with water. So I think that, you know, this is truly a flood area, and granted, you can call this a hundred-year flood, but if you really look at the history of Sioux Falls, we've had three-hundred-year floods in the last twenty to thirty years. So, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Any questions from commissioners for Debbie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the-
Hello, my name's Dan Asup. I live at eighty-one oh-one West 12th Street. It is the property right to the west of this potential development. Um, the previous speaker brings up a good point. It's probably not for this commission, but there just needs to be a bigger culvert across Discovery with or without this development. So that needs to be brought up to the, to the council. But my biggest concern is just having access to my property to the west. Um, it looks like there could be a stub in in that street. Um, but that's my biggest access, or point, is that I have to have access long-term. But from hearing to a lot of the other speakers here, uh, uh, tonight from, from the city, um, one of the things just comes to mind for me is there's already a low-income apartment complex further to the west, and because it's low-income, it does bring in probably what some of these people are fearing. But from talking with the, the developer, Steve Malagard, I know he really is passionate about putting something nice here on this corner, cause I've even talked to him about the potential of, of buying it, and he wasn't interested because I didn't have a, a good plan set in place, cause he really, he said that he owes it to the idiot some homeowners in this area to put something nice on this corner. So I wanna say that, that the developer is passionate about putting something nice there. And I would say if, if it was granted, that if you just made it a stipulation that it was not subsidy or, or low-income, maybe that would alleviate some of the concerns of, of the neighborhood. Because right now, I, I get kids four-wheeling across that whole property and, you know, going down through our ditches and stuff like that, and that's a concern for both of our properties. Um, but I would like to see it developed to cut, to cut down on, on, on some issues and vandalism and, and things like that that we have in the neighborhood. And I, I think that this would be helpful with some stipulations.
First name was Dan, right?
Yeah.
Any questions from commissioners for Dan? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Buckmiller. I live at seven-five-one-two West Fifteenth Street. First of all, I'm going to say I'm not a parent, but I do have a concern for any child in my community. And when I look at the density of this small area, I imagine a lot of children will be living there. My concerns are, one, where are they going to play? Will it be in the streets, West 12th Street, which is very busy? And I'm not being sarcastic this way. There's a lot of dangerous incidents that could happen. So number one, where are they going to play? Uh, number two, getting across the street to go to school, I don't know if buses will come and pick them up, or if they will be hoofing it all the way to Memorial. It's quite a ways, not horribly far, but I'm concerned about that. So this is something I want you to take into consideration when you think about the number of families that might be living here. And I appreciate your, um, allowing me to have input.
Any questions for Mary?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, me again. Uh, Paul Corn with Sayer Associates. I'm the engineer working with, uh, Nick Van Overshield on this property. I'd just like to speak with some of the, the drainage concerns that were mentioned. Um, as has been pointed out, this is in a floodplain. So to develop this kind of property in a floodplain, we have to build those units at least a minimum of two feet above the flood elevation out there. So, um, so the project would be designed to, to elevate those units above the floodplain. You can see there's some areas on that map there that show, uh, BMP. Those are, are ponds within the development area where stormwater would be directed to. Our instructions from this, all the infrastructure out here was designed for single-family housing, and so any housing greater than that, or any use greater than that, then we have to detain to single-family rates. So that's the direction we've received from the city, that we then have to detain stormwater to single-family rates. Um, with regards to, uh, the development, we were also involved with the development, and just like to reiterate that this is a good transitional use for this piece of property as you go from single-family out towards the arterial street. It's a low-impact, um, multi-family development, and, uh, would just, uh, urge your support for this. So, any other questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions for Paul? Thank you, Paul, thanks. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Steve Malagard, seventy-four oh-one Rocky Ridge Circle. I am the owner of the property in question. Uh, the property has been sold, been for sale for a number of years. There's been a big four-by-eight sign saying it's been for sale for a number of years. Had several opportunities to sell it, had two opportunities to sell that large piece of property to single homeowners, wanted to build a very large home on them. Kind of amazed me that they would do that in a, that they wouldn't once they found it was a floodplain. Both of those parties have since built the house, so they weren't just idle-looking. They did build. They did build their big house, their big dream home. Um, had chances to sell it for, to an eighty-six unit, three-story high apartment. He's made two runs at it. I went and looked at his units and didn't even give it a second thought. I do not want them. That is high-density, and I said, no. It was all cement. There was no trees, and it was planned. There was, there was nothing. It was cement and three stories of buildings. I feel that, that this property built, and if you, as the advisory board would put on there, the stipulation that they're single stories only, period, because right now, it kind of, it sounds like it could be two. It's got to be one, and that's the way it's got to be. I don't want two stories. I don't even like the two-story houses that we do have in our development. We have some. They met the plan, so, okay, they can build it. But there's some restrictions that could be put on there to make them appear more in the, in the, the housing thing. Um, we've had some confusion. I still do not call these apartments apartments. To me, you go in a central door, and you go to your halls, and you go to your rooms. You do not have individual garages that these have. Um, if you've got two parking stalls, where does the other eighty-six homes have their cars parked when they've got company in the street, just like this one would have? This is a private, the developer is going to own this. He's gonna keep ownership. He's gonna have Lloyd Property Management manage the property. He's invested two and a half million dollars in this thing, at least. I don't think he's gonna let it fall into disrepair. That's not very good use of his money. He's built others like these in Mitchell, Fargo, um, building some in Sioux Falls right now. They're, they're successful. Um, I live in this. I drive by this thing every day. I drive by it four times a day on weekdays. Four times I go by this. I don't want something ugly. And right now, as far as I'm concerned, it's ugly, cause it's just weeds and gravel and debris. Um, I feel this improves the area, the aesthetics, everything about it, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Steve from the commissioners?
Steve, uh, I don't believe we have the ability, if we put a zoning on this, to put stipulations like we have.
Actually, you do control that.
Mr. Chair, I think we do.
I think we do.
We do.
Oh, I take it back. Maybe we do.
We did on the last one.
I, I'm quite positive Nick will have no problems with, with the one-story stipulation.
Thank you. I stand corrected, then. Thank you. I stand corrected then.
Any further questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I think we have one more gentleman that would like to come up and speak.
Yes, thank you. My name is Wayne Flemmer, and I live at seventy-eight hundred West Noah Circle here in Sioux Falls. And that happens to be upstream from this development. And that's one of my big concerns is the, there is a drainage way that comes down to this place. And anything we do to reduce the flow of the water down this way is going to impact us upstream. And there's a number of neighbors who already were flooded out last Thursday. And I hate to see the problem get worse for them. Mine probably is not as bad as a number of them in between me and this property. I heard the comments of building up the property a foot or two before you even start the building itself. That sounds scary as far as backing up water. And then I want you folks to know that these, this intersection happens to be on two very busy arteries that go into the neighborhood. The neighborhood's got cul-de-sacs in a number of places. And so a lot of traffic comes down Browning and Discovery, which is the intersection of. And it is very busy. Obviously, this would be a lot more traffic and a little scary for all of that existing traffic. The third thing, I guess, I'd put out there for consideration if you do approve this project. It sounded like there was one little caveat of that nine-unit design. If they take that down to eight units, does that make it a lot more restrictive and maybe present a little more comfort to the petitions who, the petitioners who are concerned about this development? Does it take it back from apartment potential down to townhomes? I guess those are the things I wanted to comment on.
Any questions from staff or from the commissioners?
I guess I'll say one more thing. There probably is some places in town that because of the topography and the way water flows and the issues we've seen here in years that maybe shouldn't be, have structures put on them to make that situation even worse for a number of us.
Thank you. Well, with that, I ask for a motion for item number eight.
Move for approval for the sake of discussion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, Wayne has got me confused about the number of units on this and whether that thirty-three or thirty-two changes the type of zoning they're asking for here. Could we get a clarification on that?
Hi, Jeff Schmidt, representing planning staff this evening. The number of units on the site doesn't change the zoning at all. It's dependent upon how many units are within each structure. So that's our new forms to go into a little bit more detail. And what Nick said was if he does over eight units in a structure, then he's going into a different form, which is an apartment form. If he stays below that, then he was correct, then he's in that MD form. Then he has to, he can actually go down to an AD district or RD district, excuse me.
Thank you.
If he did want to change that, but otherwise, right now, with the nine units, to do that, he'd have to be in the RA1 zoning classification. And again, the other thing that I was thinking about when we were back there, RA1 is our lowest classification there. It's RA1, RA2, and RA3. So it's the lowest classification we have.
Thank you for clearing that up, Jeff.
Well, as I look at this, you know, there's some things about this concept that I kind of like. You know, there's trees around the perimeter. There's nice yards, things like that. You know, we talk about concerns about flooding. That is not really a piece of what we are specifically considering. There are ways to engineer, as Sayer has talked about today, ways to engineer how to handle the water and do it so that they, both these homeowners and the homeowners upstream and downstream are protected. So that's not really a primary piece of my consideration. And really, when we start to look at things and putting a bunch of conditions on a specific piece of zoning plan, that is probably allowed. But I think it's probably a lot cleaner to make this zone what is appropriate for this particular neighborhood. And in my opinion, to allow, you know, what could be up to twenty-four units and up to two stories tall doesn't sound like it really fits with the character in the neighborhood. And I tend to be opposed to this particular one.
I have to agree with Commissioner Irvin. I'm not seeing that level of structure or that level of development being appropriate in this area. And to attempt to engineer or over-engineer the zoning of a particular type to match what the proposed plan suggests it would be, I just don't think, all things in, I'm just, again, not feeling like I can get behind on this one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I actually support it. It looks to me as, we're a land-use commission and is appropriate to have low-density apartments as a buffer between a, you know, major street and single-family. And I would say, yeah, that's probably definitely appropriate. I would actually, I mean, the developer seems to be behind if we wanted to put a stipulation on to make sure they were one-story. I don't see that being an issue. I mean, we just did that with our previous item. We had a rezoning that had three stipulations on it. So I would be comfortable with that sort of a discussion and a decision. I'm not sure what everybody else thinks, though.
Mr. Chair, over the years, we've seen this quite a bit. But this is a real, real show of a neighborhood's concern on this particular issue. And I think part of what we do has to echo that just a little bit. I'd have a hard time supporting it with the show of the neighborhood. I'd feel a lot better with a stipulation on it as far as what we're looking at is what we're going to end up getting. I think the size of this with this zoning, I think, is just not one-twenty-four plex. I think it's got a size. I haven't done the math, but I think it could allow a number of twenty-four-unit complexes, which I'm kind of going to agree with you, fellas. I just don't feel comfortable with. I think if that zoning would have been in place before these folks bought their houses, I'd have an entirely different feeling about it. And we see this a lot. And typically, I've supported them. But when I see a neighborhood show like this, and Luke, by the way, you did an excellent job. I'd have a hard time supporting it.
I'm with Nick on this one. I mean, it basically is a corner that is very busy. I mean, it's not been affecting any property values at all. It's, you know, you look next door, you've got industrial next door. That's going to be storage units more than likely. I mean, to me, this is a great transition from residential to a busy road. I'm in favor of this.
And I would support Nick and Larry as well. That being said, I really appreciate the neighborhood show. Just last month, we had a similar project, only a casino was being put there. There were one, there's one neighbor that showed up. And this is, in my mind, I would be happy, and I live in a single family. Many people would be happy to even live next to beautiful townhomes, things like that, versus a casino. But I agree with the transition, the passion of the owner to keeping this, the integrity of the property. And I, as well as my fellow commissioners, have driven by this. And we did see the reads on the signs, the zoning signs, as well as across the street and the other side.
Mr. Chair, can I make an amendment to the motion to add the stipulation that, and maybe somebody can help me with what, how exactly that should read, but to allow for one-story buildings to be built?
Need a little help with this one, Jeff.
That was appropriate. When we add conditions to rezonings, they have to be based on the densities or the bulk issues that we have in the zoning ordinance. So the heights, the setbacks, what they can build. So saying that they cannot be over one story, I'm going to look over to this side, is, or, you know, do you want to say not over or under one story, whatever you think the verbiage should be. But this property could not be able to have...
Over one story?
Over one story.
Buildings over one story?
Correct.
So I will make that amendment. Second.
Okay, any more discussion?
So the amendment just addresses the height of the unit. So if they wanted to do, say, a twenty-four plex in such a way that they could have drives on both sides, it's still one-story with a pretty high roof, that would still be acceptable under this scenario?
Well, yeah, that's less dense than what it is currently proposed, I guess. I'm okay with that. Based on conversations, I don't see them changing their plan much. But the one-story seemed to be something a couple of people could get behind.
Well, that could certainly change my thinking on it, and I think I echoed that. I am impressed with the way this neighborhood showed up on this. And what I want the neighborhood to know, no matter how this vote goes, ours is simply a recommendation to the council. You will certainly get an opportunity to go to the council with your concerns, either for or against. I want everybody to feel comfortable on that. If I'm not mistaken, if we pass it, they have the first reading or will it be addressed at the next council meeting?
Yes, first reading would be September fifteenth. And the second reading and vote of that item would be the first meeting in October.
So the first meeting in October before they take any public testimony?
Correct.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to ask for a little more help, Lori.
Sure.
I have a motion to accept item number eight.
Yes.
And then I have another motion for item number eight amended.
Yes, we would want to vote on that amendment first and then go back to the main motion after that.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion in a second for item number eight amended. All in favor signify by saying yes.
You're saying the amendment to item eight or the amended item eight?
Amended item eight with one stipulation.
Amendment to item eight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Item eight amended? The amendment to item eight passes. Now I need, all in favor of item eight signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
Same sign?
Or yes?
I believe Jason probably got that.
We will do this again by the raise of hands. All in favor of item eight, please raise your hand.
We got four.
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 All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes for two. Thank you.
All right.
Number nine?
Item nine, thirty-two sixty-three, twenty fifteen, conditional use permit in the BCF one form to allow flat roofing and stone veneer within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of DD or AD forms located at twenty-four oh one West Trevy Place.
I'm going to just pause for a minute so people can exit.
It's one to the C, I guess.
All right.
Item nine here is for Three Fountains One. The applicant on this is Todd Stone, excuse me. The owner is Joel Dykstra with Prairie Hills Plaza. The conditional use permit is in the O Office District to allow a flat roof and cultured stone. The applicant is constructing an office building with cultured stone and a combination of a pitched and flat roof. Parking is located in the front yard because the project is located adjacent to DD forms, as CUP is required for approval. Again, the location is at the northeast corner of Eighty-Fifth and South Kenton Lane. It is approximately one-point-seven acres. The applicant is requesting to provide a stone veneer and a combination of a pitched and flat roof in lieu of the minimum four-twelve pitched roof. In addition, parking is provided to be located in the front yard where adjacent to the detached dwelling forms. Where a conditional use permit is required for approval, the following will be considered. The substitution of the permitted special use standard should perform at the same or higher level than the brick or wood siding, pitched roof, or parking in the front yard when adjacent to DD and AD forms that are required by the special permitted standards through methods such as orientation, topography, higher level of aesthetics, or barriers that are used to create comparable performance. The proposed office building is designed with cultured stone and EFS on all facades of the building and a combination of flat and pitched roof lines where adjacent to residential forms to the north. Parking is also located to the north of the property, adjacent to residential. A Level B buffer yard is required at the north side of the property and should provide screening for the proposed parking lot. Staff feels that the building design and proposed materials are consistent with single and multi-family properties in the area. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff recommends approval for the conditional use permit. And I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions from commission staff? Thank you, Diane. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward.
Good evening. Todd Stone with Stone Group Architects here in Sioux Falls, three-nineteen North Main. I think Diane did a great job of covering everything that we wanted to cover in the conditional use. And I believe we've done a very thoughtful process here of trying to modify something that would fit within the residential and commercial as a office buffer yard. So I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Well, seeing none, I look for commission action on item number three, or number nine, excuse me. Move to approve.
Second.
All, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
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 Opposed, the same sign? Motion passes.
Right, item ten, thirty-two thirty-three, twenty fifteen, alternative site plan for a parking reduction, alternative plan in the S-one general institutional district located at fifty-two-hundred West Lake Shore Boulevard.
Jason Bieber with Planning Staff. This is an application by Garrett Peters, representing Avera McKinnon Hospital. It is located at fifty-two-hundred West Lake Shore Boulevard, just north of the proposed Lake Lorraine development. Avera McKinnon is proposing to construct a new three-story medical clinic with an emergency room and the associated parking lot. The site plan does indicate the three-story, roughly eighty-five-thousand-square-foot building located in the center portion of the lot. The first floor contains roughly thirty-one-thousand square feet with half of it being dedicated to the emergency room and the other half as a clinic use. And then the second and third floors are roughly twenty-seven-thousand square feet per floor. The site plan above you indicates two-hundred-and-forty parking spaces provided. This number of parking... This number of parking spaces divided by the total square footage of the building gets us to roughly three-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet of building area per parking, proposed parking space. The Avera McKinnon plan does indicate that parking should be calculated based on the provider-patient ratio and plus the number of employees they'll have on the maximum shift. Utilizing this method, they do indicate when this property is completely built out and all the providers are hired, they will have roughly twenty-eight providers and sixty staff members on the maximum shift. Their calculation for number of patients per provider is roughly four-point-four-four patients. So, if you take that times the number of providers, that gets you to one-hundred-and-twenty-four parking spaces, and then add in the number of employees on the maximum shift to sixty, that's one-hundred-and-eighty-four. And then they will also have six therapists. That gets you to one-ninety, and then sixteen staff members for the proposed emergency room on the first floor. And that gets you to a grand total of two-hundred-and-six parking spaces that Avera's alternative parking plan indicates they need. And like I said before, they are providing roughly two-hundred-and-forty parking spaces. The applicant has provided the necessary parking study criteria as indicated in the alternative parking plan section of the ordinance. The plan indicates maximum number of vehicles at the peak hour for three other clinics that they already currently have. One, the newest clinic is just south of Sixty-Ninth and Cliff, if anybody's been by there. And the maximum number of vehicles that they've observed with, are five different dates, was around the eleven to noon hour, and that was seventy-three patient vehicles. Further, the plan does indicate the new trend in clinic care, and the applicant can probably speak a little bit more to this, to have larger office areas for the provider but still see the same number of patients. So, it's, the trend is larger buildings but the same number of patients as in the smaller buildings. Finally, an emergency department will take roughly thirteen thousand square feet of that first floor, and the peak hours for the emergency department is usually after five o'clock, with the peak hours for the clinic, the other clinic areas from eight to five. Because the application has provided the necessary parking plan criteria to warrant the reduction, and the amount of parking should be sufficient for the proposed building and use, staff does recommend approval of this alternative site plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here?
I'm Garrett Peters, the Director of Facility Development for Avera McKinnon, address eleven oh-five West Eagle Ridge Circle. Yeah, I think he presented what we are proposing to do very well. We're basing it on actual parking numbers and not on square footage of the building. And I think our three examples pretty well cover it, what we've done in the past and what we would need, so... Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Just a comment that it seems really nice to have this kind of data and information to help inform us about what your intent is. That really helps us make this kind of a decision, I think.
I would echo that. Mr. Chair, I just have one question. In the very unlikely event that you would exceed that parking capacity, is there a contingency plan? Do you do parking on the street, or?
No, actually, we have talked, there's a church across the street that we have talked to, and they use the parking lot Sundays. Our peak times would be Monday through Friday. It's the ten-thirty to twelve-thirty. And so, we've talked with them about if we do run short on parking, can we work out some sort of arrangement with them? And they were open to that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yeah.
Only because there's such a roomful of people, and Sean usually does this, I'm jumping in before him. This is a new item based on shape places, and in the old ordinance, we never had the ability to do this. You had the parking code, and that's all you had, and we added alternative parking standards just so institutions can come in and say, "Look, this is actually the responsibility. This is what we have." They show us the facts. You come to the public hearing, you show the documents, and we can meet different standards, but we don't know what they are. We're just using another book. And so, when they can come in and they can show, here's, and then you stated it. Look, there's the facts. Then we can have the public hearing and adjust their parking accordingly. So, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that, that that's the alternative parking plan, so...
And to use that a couple of times tonight, the new shape places, with stipulations on zoning and now alternative parking plans. So, working well.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, I look for commission action on item number ten then. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Needing adjourn.